Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's study session. It's 6:01, so a minute late. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the transit study. Is that you, Mr. Dwayne?
Did I figure out how to get my mask off? Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we're going to talk about transit. And with me to talk about transit is Irene Higgs, Executive Director of the Suncoror MPO. And on the phone is Jill Doucenberry with the ADOT Transit Group. So, we're here to talk about transit, but in particular, I don't know if you all know, in the CARES Act, there was $2.57 million allocated to the city of Casa Grande for transit. This was 100% no match or anything, and can only be spent on transit. So, we're here tonight to talk a little bit about the possibilities of utilizing some of that money. So with that, Irene's turn.
Are we on, are we already here? I don't think you advanced the... So, why are we here? You already covered the why we are here. Okay, all right. So, sorry.
We practiced a lot.
I know, right? So, good evening. So, I'm going to cover, so what have we done? So, over the last couple of years, we actually completed a transit development plan. It's actually been two years. So, tonight, I want to kind of do a little bit of a refresher on the transit development plan, how it's developed using a data-driven process. It's not just Dwayne and I sitting around trying to decide where routes would go on a map, and how that data is used to determine those routes. And also, I'd like to talk a little bit about the public engagement and what we did during the development of the study, asking the questions, you know, was transit needed, and would you use transit?
Well, once again, we have that $2.57 million of CARES Act funding, and we want to look at how would we possibly utilize that. Irene's going to talk a little bit about updating the transit plan and some other ideas we have. Federal Transit Administration is holding on to that $2.57 until we make a decision. And so, that's what we're here for tonight, is to talk about, sure.
I just had a question related to that. Does that come out of the balance that we had left, or is that special funding?
This is special, separate from any other CARES Act funding, just Federal Transit Administration CARES Act. As I said before, it can only be spent on transit.
What question, is there a deadline? Deadline, is there a deadline?
Not right now, but we think that somewhere there probably will be. That's why we, if we're going to utilize any of it, we'd like to move ahead as fast as we can.
If it's, if it's anything related to, like the other CARES Act, they do have, the limit is this year, you have to actually, but I know transportation obviously takes a lot longer to spend, so.
Yeah, there's no published deadline when we have to use it.
And Dwayne, you might, I know we're asking all these questions before you're going to go through the presentation, but you might answer this, but we have additional dollars allocated for transportation. Are you going to get there also?
Right, we'll get into that, too.
In your presentation, okay. Thank you. So, why are we here?
I just stole away, we were here. I think we need to move on.
I know, we're going to entertain you guys tonight. Okay, so, in, as what Lisa was just talking down, we're turning down FTA allocations every year. We get approximately $843,000, and those are transit funds and only can be used as transit needs. And so, you know, we can use that funding for operating and maintaining a transit service, capital projects, and public, or transit planning. And so, because-
Irene, what was the amount again, I'm sorry?
$843,000. So, that's an approximate amount. So, when we don't use this funding, the...
No, thousand. Well, she said thousand.
And so, so when we don't, yeah, if it was 843 million, I'd be jumping them down. So, so when we don't use this funding, then that funding goes back to ADOT, and ADOT distributes that funding to other eligible transit agencies here in the state of Arizona. And so, we've built a really nice transit facility up in Flagstaff by not utilizing our transit funding. So, as Dwayne mentioned, there is $2.57 million of CARES Act funding available to the city of Casa Grande. And as he mentioned, there is no lapse date at this time. We do figure, just like any other federal program, eventually, the federal government will set a date of when that funding has to be utilized. And also, it's 100% federal, meaning that there is no local match requirement required by the city of Casa Grande to utilize that funding. So, as I stated, you know, Dwayne stated, we'd like to update the transit plan. We know we just finished that two years ago, but who would have ever planned for a pandemic? And so, we would like to go back and look at that transit plan and see if we have, you know, we need to look at impacts that COVID-19 has done to transit all across the country. And also, we'd also like to do a more in-depth survey to the employees out in the industrial area, especially now that Lucid is up and operating. I know that Councilmember Cortson had asked that, and we just didn't have the budget at the time to be able to do that. So, we would like to go back and do a really in-depth survey. You know, we met with the management teams, but we didn't do an actual survey with employees. So, we would like to do that. And then, we'd also like to create some sort of a phase plan to, so that the city could possibly utilize the remaining $2.3 million and start some sort of a transit system here in the very near future, and update cost estimates as well. So, do you want to cover the money that we need?
So, as Irene and both of us have said, there's $2.57 million. However, we, we can't apply for it ourselves, because we're not designated as, to receive federal transit money. You know, the governor needs to designate us. That's a long, drawn-out process. We don't really feel we have time to wait for that. So, we can have ADOT apply for the money for us. However, ADOT would like to have 10% fee of whatever we apply for. So, we're looking at $245,000. We would have to pay ADOT $24,500.
Will they widen I-10 with that?
Pardon me?
Will they help widen I-10 with that money?
So, that's what we're here tonight. We want to talk about, as Irene said, all about the transit, and we want to talk about that $24,500, how we might get that money.
So, what have we done? So, like I said, I'm going to take you back through the transit development plan that we completed. So, we began that study in 2016 and completed it in January of 2019. We were able to do the transit development plan. We received a grant from ADOT, an FTA grant, in the amount of $160,000. And council approved $40,000 in matching funds for us to be able to do the grant, or to be able to do the study. And so, we, we developed a transit technical advisory committee to assist us and guide us in the development of the study. Members of that technical advisory committee included nonprofit agencies, peer cities such as Coolidge and the city of Maricopa, Chamber of Commerce, Planning and Zoning, ADOT, and Councilwoman Fitzgibbons attended the technical advisory committee as well. The study was developed using a data-driven approach. Again, like I said, it's not Dwayne and I deciding on the map where transit routes should go. And it included a lot of community engagement. We really tried to reach out to the community and our stakeholders to find out, was transit needed and would they use it? And route options were identified based on the data and stakeholder and community input. So, what type of community feedback did we get? So, as Dwayne likes to say, this was a public outreach study with a little bit of transit. So, we received a lot of feedback from the community, and our public engagement consultant team was actually very surprised at the amount of responses that were received from the surveys. We did online and hard copy surveys throughout the community, and we also did them in English and Spanish. We received a total of 569 surveys. So, we had a total of 430 online surveys and 139 hard copy surveys. We held stakeholder meetings with public agencies such as Maricopa, Coolidge, Pinale County, Central Arizona Governments, and the Maricopa Association of Governments. Those stakeholder meetings also included social, social service groups such as Pinale Hispanic Council, Horizon, and Horizon Health Services. We met with major employers such as Banner, Abbott, Francisco Grande, Walmart Distribution Center, Hexcel, Promenade Mall, and Holiday Inn. We met with future developers such as Lucid, Atessa, Phoenix Mart, and Dreamport Villages. We held two rounds of public meetings, one in the very beginning to find out if transit was needed, and then we held another one with an online mapping tool that they could actually comment on the potential route options that we had provided in the plan. So, what did we hear from the community? So, do you think transit is needed in Casa Grande? 91% or 518 out of the 569 survey responses said yes, they felt transit was needed here in Casa Grande. Would you use public transit if it was available in Casa Grande? 74% or 421 out of the 569 surveys said yes, they would use transit if it were available. So, where would you go if transit were available?
So, you can see on the slide, some of the places they said they would go. For example, shopping. Shopping is a good thing for the city, because the more people that can shop, you know, it's good for our economy. Healthcare, especially now, we're all concerned about healthcare. This would be a way for them to get to Banner Health and other health organizations around town. And of course, work, work is a real important one. And, let's see, the next slide. So, what we did was, we talked to a number of organizations, are there people able to get to work without any trouble? The Holiday Inn, for instance, said they have issues with, especially in the summertime, when they have people that have to walk to work, it's too hot, they don't come. But one of the big ones, I was at a Chamber of Commerce meeting at Arizona Works. We were in the middle of this at the time, so I asked the guy that runs Arizona Works, I said, "I know you train people to get jobs, and you find jobs for them, are they able to get there?" And he said, "That's one of their biggest issues. They train them, they find them a job, and they don't have any way to get there." So, you know, we feel transit is really important for people getting to work also. That's your...
So, as I stated earlier, the transit development study is a data-driven process, and there are certain locational factors that contribute to transit demand. And we put those locational factors into a transit demand model. And those locational factors include minority, elderly, low income, health and social services, one or zero-car households, persons with disabilities, and employment density. So, as you can see on the, on the map there, the darker purple areas of the map shows the highest demand area for transit, and this is how routes are identified. So, when we, when we were going through the study, we actually identified 34 different options, and we, you know, met with Comment from the city of Maricopa, CART from the city of Coolidge. We also had other peer cities that we looked at, Sierra Vista, to make sure that what we were doing is on track to what they did when they began transit. And so, Dwayne's going to talk a little bit about some of the options that we looked
I think, as Irene mentioned earlier, COVID-19 has changed a lot of this. Some of these options that were not very viable back then are becoming more viable. For instance, demand response, you need a ride, you call and get one. That's becoming more popular around the country. Automated vehicles, two years ago, they were just getting going. Now, there are cities that are actually, have shuttles, automated shuttles going on. And, of course, van pooling has been, is already a big thing in town. Abbott Labs and some of those companies already do a lot of, a lot of van pooling. So, that's a number of the things we looked at. Now, this is a, the, the route in the study that was the recommended route. Now, we're not saying this is the route that would come out of an updated study. It's just an example to show you what a possible route might look like. And if you see, it goes to the rec center, it goes out west towards Lucid in that way. So, it's, like I said, just an example. Through the study, we would, we would look again at the routes and see what makes sense.
So, as Dwayne said, this is just an example. So, you can tell, so from the heat map that I showed you, that Pinale and Florence Cottonwood area, this would cover, you know, getting residents to and from those areas. And the blue line is the three-quarter mile ADA required area, it's a paratransit area. And that's for, you know, the elderly and disabled, and we could either, we could handle that blue area either with a demand response or a deviated fixed route type service. So, just wanted to point that out.
Which I forgot to say. Thank you, Irene.
You're welcome. So, how do we move forward? So, as many of you know, March 27th, President Trump signed the CARES Act bill. $25 billion of CARES Act funds were made available to eligible transit agencies to help prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19, and for economic recovery from the pandemic. So, as I stated, $2.57 million is available, because Casa Grande is an urbanized area when you became a metropolitan planning organization, when you reached 50,000 in population. So, again, this money is 100% federal with currently no lapse date. It can be used for operating and maintaining transit system, capital projects, and transit planning. In order to access this $2.57 million, or any portion of the $2.57 million, ADOT must apply on behalf of the city of Casa Grande. It will require a 10% admin fee, that's for ADOT to fill out the application and submit it to FTA, and for all of the federal reporting requirements that comes along with the federal So, we would like to utilize a portion of the CARES Act funding, $245,000, to update the transit plan that was completed two years ago. So, why is an update needed? You think, we just finished this. Well, nobody planned for COVID-19. And with the current transit trends, we feel that we should look at starting maybe with a demand response system and voucher program versus a fixed route. The original transit development plan had planned for 70% fixed route with maybe 30% demand response and deviated fixed route. We would like, like I said, to complete an employee-based survey in the industrial area, where we actually meet or, you know, survey the employees, not just meeting with management to find out, is transit service really needed? We would need to review and update cost estimates of the study, based on the findings of the new study. And we would like to come up with a phase plan on how the city could implement transit, utilizing the remaining $2.3 million of CARES Act funding over the next few years. Once the CARES Act funding is exhausted, have a plan of how the city could continue, if they should wish, to utilize the eligible FTA 5307 funding that they get, the $843,000
So, in summary, we're here to talk about how to utilize the CARES Act funding. The study will cost $245,000, and we're planning on coming back, if everything works out, the next council meeting, to ask for council approval of the $24,500, which I believe would come out of council contingency, since we didn't budget for this at the beginning of the year. So, that's, anything to add? So, what questions do you have?
Just clarification on these numbers. Is the $24.5,000, is that to pay ADOT's 10%?
Yeah, that's ADOT's 10%. And that does not come out of the CARES Act funding.
It cannot?
It can't come out of that.
Okay.
We tried.
Okay. So, it's $245,000 to update the plan?
Yes.
10% of what's there, isn't it?
No.
Go ahead, Matt.
Dwayne, perhaps, perhaps you can expand on that a little bit, on the $2.57 that we're only asking for $245,000 to update the plan at this, at this council.
Right. So, as Irene said, there'd still be $2.3 million available in the CARES Act funding. At the end of the update of the transit plan, we could decide whether we wanted to move ahead or, or not.
So, in the plan, when you come back with the updated plan, can you also include, like what the, what a maintenance plan would cost? In other words, would this $843,000 we get a year, would that help maintain something that we might purchase today with the CARES Act money?
Yes, that would be the plan. The phased approach would be to look at spending the CARES Act money, and then what happens when that's gone.
To kind of get it off the ground, yeah.
And then, what do we have to do to maintain?
Matt, you had a question?
Yeah, a couple. So, if this goes, and if we get the $2.57 million, then do we have to pay $257,000 to get the $2.5, that we can't take out of the CARES Act?
The 250.
No, that's just for $245,000.
That comes out of the CARES Act.
But if we draw down the $2.5 million, like for this, we have to pay $2.45,000, 10%. Do we have to come up with 10% out of pocket for the $2.5 million?
No.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
So, in order to access the $2.3 million that would be left, it would be the city's responsibility to get FTA designation. So, kind of like what you've done with the CDVG program, you became a direct recipient. So, to FTA, you would have to prove that financially, legally, and technically, that you're able to administer the grant program.
So, this would, this would just get us a bridge gap to, until we apply for our own access?
I was just wondering, then we had to pay another 10% to draw that.
No.
And then, the big question, how long is it going to, I mean, now we're two years. Now, we've got COVID, and I understand that impacts a lot of things, but if we take another two years, COVID hopefully is gone.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, what's our timeframe? Because all these employers are starting, see them all the time. We've got that, we've been talking about this for four years, and I'm not, I mean, I would like to see the plan with the dollars, that's what's important to me, to make sure it's sustainable. But, I mean, what's our timeframe we're talking about?
So, to complete the study, we're hoping to do that pretty quickly, like within a six-to-eight month timeframe, and then come back to, to council and present the findings of that study. And then, it's up to you guys on, you know, to file for designation through FTA is probably, you know, I want to say probably a four-to-six month process. It just depends on how quickly we get the information to FTA for consideration, and then you get, receive designation from the governor. So, once you have that in place, the city can apply, you know, for the remaining $2.3 million. You know, we know the clock is ticking, so we want to hurry this along as quickly as possible. And, you know, perhaps we come and present a couple of times to council as we're doing this. And so, you know, if we want to start the designation process, we could be doing that parallel along with it.
That's my next question.
Yeah, so concurrent?
Yeah.
Yeah, concurrent.
And then, the one, I guess the maps are going to change, so I won't even ask about, you know, the one stopped at Thornton, but didn't go down to all the employers, which to me, that's still a mile and a half walk, so.
Right. And if, and if we look at a demand response, that's, that's going to take people, pick them up at their homes and drop them off at their destinations.
I'm just talking about taking it to employer, the employers.
Right.
You know, the big boxes out there, so. But I do know, this last thing I'll say, is that a lot of employers that I have talked to, one of the biggest obstacles for hiring people is that people can't get to, you know, and I, and one of my first questions when I hire someone is, can you make it to work every day? You know, I mean, that's just a thing that you have to ask. And so, no matter what you think about it, it is, I mean, it is an obstacle for people, you know, just to get a job, because they can't make it every day.
Right.
Mary, go ahead.
Okay, so a couple of questions. Number one is, when you met with the different people, and I, did you meet with most of the people out in the industrial area, west of town there? And was there, you know, I'm, I'd like to see more of a partnership with these employers, that if it's so, and it is important to them that they get employees to work, ready to work, and that sort of thing, if there was more of a partnership that we could bring in. I disagree that, I believe people will walk two to three blocks to catch a bus. So, I, I do disagree with some people that say that they won't, they don't want to necessarily, we need to make them more appealable. You know, you, again, you know, one idea I had had was the idea that you would have a kiosk that would have charging stations and a, could have a vending machine and something overhead, so that as you're waiting there for your 20, 30 minutes, if it's that long to get picked up. So, I'd like to see some innovation there where that's, that's concerned. But also, I really like the idea that you're going to go ahead and approach the working folks, and the questions that you're going to ask them. What, you know, what it is. And so, the biggest, the only statistic I really could get right offhand with is AAA in, in 2017, that was three years ago, average cost for a small average sedan, which is what most people drive here, $7,000 a year ownership, that's what it costs to own that. That's $583, that's probably half the rent of what many of our workers are making right now. And so, if we take a look at that and bring in the transit idea, and that, I think that we could get more ridership and more people willing to come on board, literally.
Yes, I think we agree with all, all of those things you mentioned, and part of the update of the study would be to look, look at those things. For instance, the partnership with the businesses. That's how a lot of agencies come up with their match money, is companies selling, buying passes and that, that sort of thing.
You're right.
So, so we're definitely looking at all that.
Are you going to include autonomous vehicles as well?
Right, well, like I said earlier, that is becoming more prevalent around the country, and we will take another look at what's going on now with autonomous vehicles.
Mr. Powell?
I'm wondering, I'm looking at the option one on Florence Boulevard, and where are the bus stops?
Well, they're van stops.
What's that?
They're going to be van stops.
Not buses.
We're not actually having buses, we're doing vans.
Yeah.
We don't know yet. You know, we know where CART stops, they stop like the County Credit Union, they stop at Banner Health, they stop at Walmart.
The county.
The county complex.
So, so we'll look at where those are. Probably if we started a transit system, cart would no longer come into town and stop at those places. They would stop probably maybe the mall, or CAC, or something. And then we would, we would pick up the ridership from that point. But these are all things to take another look at in the revised study.
Are you looking at a bus or a shuttle on this?
We're looking, well, that's another thing in the study, but we're not looking at big buses, you know, some sort of a
A van.
A van, that type of thing. We don't think we can fill up a 50-passenger bus, but 18 people, maybe, something like that, probably the right size.
Similar to the cart, the cart vans?
Yeah.
Have you seen those?
What's that?
The cart vans?
The cart van?
Coolidge, somewhere to that.
Yeah, I've seen them come in, I very rarely ever see a lot of people on it, but I do see them come back and forth.
There's even smaller ones than that, if we
There's even smaller ones, yeah.
What I'm curious about is, I know that the, several of the big companies weren't very interested in trying to do something for ridership. I know that one of them that's on here was, but a lot of the others said they don't need that and weren't really a player. I think, I think places like going out to the promenade and that thing, that area would certainly be a relevant place. But basically, when you take, when you take that survey, if you're a person asking, would you like to have municipal service? Yeah, I would. Can you come to my house and pick me up? And that's, that's the answer that you have to try to say, okay, you're kind of away, you're six or eight blocks away, how do you get down to where the bus is going to go? And, I mean, those are just questions I have, I'm not trying to be, to shoot holes in it, Lisa will beat me up if I do, but I just wanted to
Well, I think one of, and I think
To ask some questions.
I think, Mr. Powell, one of the things they are going to do is look at a demand, more of a demand-response program, which means you would call, the bus would come pick you up at your house, and then take you to work. And they might pick up somebody else on the way. So it's more of a demand-type service.
Now, that would be a shuttle-based one, I assume. Well, that would make more sense than
That's one of the things they're going to look at.
Right, as we said earlier, it used to be 70% fixed route, 30% demand response. It looks like that's now 70% demand response, 30% fixed route.
I think that's a great idea.
I think if you were able to do as you're saying,
Yeah.
Where you would go pick people up, it would be, you'd get a lot more ridership
Yep.
Than you would from having them have to try to find a way to get three, or four, or five blocks down from where they are to a bus stop.
More of a service, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Donna, I think you had a question.
I just, can you refresh my memory, the original transit plan? How much did that cost for us to do?
Each was different.
I mean, so, we received an FTA grant for $160,000, and the cash match on that was $40,000. So we had a total of $200,000 to do the transit development study.
So to update this plan, we're looking for $245,000. So, and I guess, that's my, that's my only concern, it just seems like a lot of money to update a plan that we've already done. I agree with everything everybody said, I do need it, and I do think that people will use it, but I guess I'm just, that's a, that's a lot of money to update a plan.
The employee survey is going to, it's going to be pretty costly, we feel. So that's, that's why we're asking for that, we're hoping we don't need that much. And if we don't utilize the full $245,000, then the admin fee, the $24,500, if you don't utilize all of that, the remaining balance of that would come back to the city of Casa Grande.
How much does the bus that comes out of Coolidge charge to take people back and forth?
Two dollars? Yeah, I don't, I don't remember right off the top of my head, it's either two or three dollars, I would say.
I want to say some of our employees at the county go from the county building in Florence back here, and I think it's two or three dollars.
And I see a lot in the county, because I go over to the county all the time, and I see a lot of people waiting and getting on and off.
Where's that?
Over the county complex in Cottonwood. I go to the recorder shelf.
Bob, you had a question?
Well, I just wanted to add some observations. City of Maricopa, they're five years ahead of us, I'm guessing. They seem to have gone through all these stages. They, in 2018, just finished a transit demand report, and it seems like they've experienced a lot of the things that we're talking about right now. It seems those original surveys, like Mr. Powell said, do you think we need a transit system? Would you use it if we have it? And the overwhelming response is yes, yes, yes. And then when they actually put it in place, nobody wrote it, nobody showed up. And so they, they have gone back and offered on-demand, point-to-point, and that by far is getting more business than the bus routes. They, when they did a survey in this last report about why aren't you riding the bus, everything was, it needs to be expanded, more routes, more stops, more variance on the trip. And of course, I'm reading that, and I'm seeing dollar signs, dollar signs, dollar signs, and maybe they still won't ride it, you know, like they, like they didn't do in the first place. So I'm all in favor of pursuing the study, but I, but I guess I agree with you that I really think our focus for study and survey needs to be on that on-demand, point-to-point. It sounds, it sounds much more practical for our citizens. Now, they have a 24-hour minimum scheduling, so you call in 24 hours before, you tell them what time you would like to be picked up, where you're going, and it costs a dollar. That's all, that's all it costs. But I can see something like Super Shuttle, us managing something like that. Plus, the capital costs on something like that would be much, much lower, to where if we found out this isn't working and we can't afford it, we could get out of it pretty cheaply. Anyway, my two cents.
Even lower if we go autonomously.
Yeah, one thing about the 24 hours, that gives you the opportunity to plug who wants to go where in a computer program, and then you can figure out who you pick up first, second, third, and fourth, and all that sort of stuff. So it can be pretty efficient that way.
Well, and that's, anybody that's ridden Super Shuttle, that's exactly how they do it. You know, you let them know in advance, and they schedule it, and you're on a route by that time.
Lisa, you had a question?
Well, and I understand you're concerned with, you know, investing another $240,000, but I think, you know, I'm really hoping, because I was part of this group, and I know how much work that was done, and all the people that were involved, all the data that was collected, the community meetings. So I did hear firsthand, you know, people that went out of their way to come and give input on, you know, how this can make a difference, whether it's someone that has a child that, you know, has developmental needs, but, or, you know, can't drive because they're, you know, have seizures, or someone that couldn't get to their job. So I think we have to remember that we can all get in our cars and drive somewhere, but there's a lot of people that can't. A lot of people don't have, you know, there's large families, multiple drivers in the home, so they don't have those means. So I'm really hoping that we, you know, use some of the data that we've collected, and I would imagine that's what's going to help us get deeper by having, you know, a baseline, and then dig a little bit deeper. And I'm really hoping we can continue to keep some of those stakeholders that were in part of that group, because they, Maricopa was in this group, and so was Coolidge, and they were really good at providing input on the routes, their successes, some of their, you know, concerns, and so I'm happy to hear that they're changing. But can you guys maybe give us an idea of why we went more of a fixed route back then? And I know you said because of COVID, we're looking more demand. Is that the reason that you're switching it, and that's why you have to dig deeper, because of COVID-related issues?
Well, at that time, everybody was advising us not to start with a demand response, because once people have that, you can't get them away from it. But now it's starting to look like, so what's wrong with doing that? So things have changed, we've learned more since then, so that's why we're looking at demand response.
And then I know when we, sorry, one more thing. When we did this study, there, we talked about the fleet, and how we don't necessarily have to incur the cost and the capital for this. There was companies that can provide that service, like Dunn Transportation, they were part of the group, you know, out of Scottsdale. And so is that the case, even if we did demand response? Can we still have a third-party company run this operation? So then it's easier to cut off, if, you know, if we run it for two years, and using the money, the $800,000 that's allocated on a yearly basis, and if we find that no one's using it, then we don't have all of that, you know, that investment. So is that still the case if we do the demand response?
Just remember, I always say, I don't want to run a transit system.
I know.
So, yes, we could still use a third party. One of the things we've talked about is, a cart already has a maintenance facility, we could, we could team with them and have them supply the vans and so on here.
Okay.
But that's another thing the study will help us decide.
One of the ironic things, Bob, about Maricopa, was when they first started out, as you said, they couldn't fill a bus. People just weren't using it. And so they started this deal where they were going to take busloads of people to Chandler Mall to shop. Yes, they did that. So people filled the bus up, went there, spent their money in Chandler Mall, and they brought it back to Maricopa again, but
We're not going to do that.
No.
No, I know we're not.
Mary, you had a question?
I actually, Lisa went right into it, because I was going to say, instead of getting into the bus business, I would love to see a third-party person who knows what they're doing.
Well, and cart already exists, too, right? So cart could be a partner in this as well.
No, that would be great.
And they have the experience, too.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I don't want to get into the transportation.
Does he mail any comments or questions?
Just lastly, I'm kind of aware, Councilmember Herman talked about the timeframe, I'm really hoping we can move a little faster on this, so.
Ditto.
Yeah, we don't want that money to go away. And we want to give them an opportunity to utilize every penny of it, if that's the case. And also, the HEROES Act, there's $32 billion of FTA funds in that bill, should it ever pass. And I don't know what the allocation, you know, if any, to the city of Casa Grande might be.
Okay. Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I can, I don't want to put Ms. Higgs or Mr. Itel on the spot, but when the consultants for the PRTA was here a couple of, about a month ago, talking about the governance, I just, I want to try to tie the two together, if I can, very quickly, in a small package. I know several councilmembers had articulated the fact that there was some uncertainty about how the two work together. I think, do the two of you feel comfortable, at least, kind of broadening this a little bit?
You bet.
Just so that we can perhaps put it, put it together for the council this evening?
Yeah, we thought that question would come up. I didn't think it'd come from you. You want to answer that?
So if the city of Casa Grande, you know, if this governing board structure is created, and the city of Casa Grande should decide to join that governing structure, then your eligible fundings, the 5307 fundings, the 843,000, or any funding that's allocated to the urbanized area must be spent within the urbanized boundaries, okay? Not to say that you, you know, the admin costs or the operating costs, you might have to pay that RTA governing structure, whoever is managing that, to, you know, do the application and the federal reporting and all of that. But I just want to make that very clear, that I know the question, it came up, I believe that, well, who would determine those routes? It's a data-driven process, and you would continue to have those transit studies that would look at the data, and that's how those lines, those routes are drawn on the map. It is not a board making those decisions for you. It's those studies that are federally required that would dictate where the biggest needs are within the urbanized boundary. I hope that answers some of the questions that maybe you had.
Can I make just one comment? I really want to say how much I appreciate the two of you with such an extensive outreach and listening to all the people you reached out to, and the idea that you feel that you need your outreach out to the employees. So thank you very much for doing that, really appreciate that.
Bob?
I had a question, I got a little bit lost on that. Would that be a new entity that was developed to manage this system if we had that route?
So, so I know that's what the Penale RTA is looking at, their governance study is looking at options within the county, so that, so that there's not all these different FTA agencies running their own separate transit agencies.
Bob, we're talking about two different buckets of money also. There's federal FTA money that comes in through the state that we get direct, but we haven't used it. Then there's RTA money, that's part of the PRTA, the Penale Regional Transportation Authority. There's part of that tax money that we're collecting is to go to transit, so, but the county wants to try and pull it all together and make it a county program.
And ultimately, my question was going to be, who manages Maricopa's system? Because I thought that was under MAG.
So it would be up to, the way the, I believe the governance study is going, they're going to leave options. So it would be up to the city of Maricopa to decide if they wanted to be under the same umbrella as the governing board for all of Penale County, or they would have an option to stay with the Maricopa Association of Government.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll have the same option as the city, as the city of Casa Grande as well. Obviously, we have an independent, would potentially have an independent system when we're done with the study, and if we became designated and the like, we would have the option. The outreach has been done for the governance, and the study that's been done for the governance was evaluating Penale County as a whole, and we would also have the option to potentially go into a hybrid or a consolidated system as a city, and share in those costs, the efficiencies, the revenues, by running a consolidated type of a system. Is that fair?
That is correct.
Is Sun Corridor and CAG, are there any options, or is that out of the picture?
I'm a very small fish in the sea.
I thought, why not build upon something that's already there, as opposed to creating a whole new one?
It is probably an option, but some things would probably have to change for us to be able to be that governing structure.
Okay.
Well, and I think that's part of the dialogue that's going to be going on with the PRTA, and the mayor serves as our, as our official to that board today, but there will likely be some dialogue as the structure begins to take place, and if the appeal is successful, there'll be some dialogue about what type of a, what type of a system, what type of a structure will be put in place for the county as a whole.
Okay.
And who will actually potentially operate that PRTA as a whole as well.
But we do feel that we'll have all this done before decisions made in agreement on the governance study. So I'm thinking that's, you know, some years off before that's finally finalized.
Matt?
Okay.
Last question.
I just want to, this is just a comment even, just, as a government, we studied this, you know, like, people are sick of studies. So I hope we can get this, and it is required to do this study, right, to get this money, we need an updated study. Is that true, or can we just, I mean?
No, you don't have to, but in our discussions with FTA, it's in ADOT, it's recommended that we go ahead and take a look at it before we try to implement something. Because pretty much all the cost estimates in the transit development plan are for fixed routes. So if we want to go a different route, and we want to, you know, reach out to the industrial area to really find out what the transit needs are out there, then it's recommended that we update the transit study.
Yeah, we just have to be responsible, and again, Councilwoman Fitzgibbon said, I said it, you know, people are tired, and I'm frankly tired of talking about it one way or the other. Not that you guys aren't doing what you're doing, but I mean, let's just get it going.
All right, well, thank you both.
I wonder if Jill, if I'm still on the phone, does she have any comments?
I'm still here, Dwayne. I'm not sure, can everyone hear me?
We can.
Oh, yeah.
Wonderful. So it's a very interesting discussion you've had this evening, all very good points. ADOT just wants to make sure that you're aware, we're willing to be a partner, so that you can access a portion of this funding. And the ultimate goal, as Irene identified, would be for the city of Casa Grande, or whatever governance entity is created in Penale County, could access this money in the future on their own. So we're willing to help you over the hump, but it is critical to move as quickly as possible. FTA is in contact monthly with ADOT, asking about our expenditure of the CARES money we received for rural areas of Arizona. So Congress is watching this funding and making sure it is needed and used in the communities that it's allocated to. So we're here as a partner, and thank you for letting me listen in this evening.
Thank you for being on the phone. Irene, Dwayne, thank you both.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we'll stand adjourned until 7 o'clock.
Hey, Dwayne.